We'll call the Prattville City Council Meeting into order. If you'll rise, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, followed by the invocation tonight given by Councilor Denise Brown.
Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in prayer, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this opportunity to gather together tonight to do the business of this city. We thank you for each person that's here tonight, each employee, each citizen. We thank you for all the blessings, Lord, that you give to us. We pray for wisdom tonight, Lord, as we go forward, and we pray that you will watch over those that can't be with us tonight. Thank you for all the many blessings, Lord, we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Councilor Striplin.
Here.
Councilor Wood.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Bowles.
Here.
Councilor Fink.
Here.
The character trait of the month is decisiveness, the ability to recognize key facts and finalize difficult decisions. Fellow councilors, you have received copies of the minutes from the City Council Meeting and Public Hearing of July 3, 2012. Are there any adjustments, amendments, or changes in the minutes? Seeing no hands, Chair, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I hear a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Councilor Bowles. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the minutes are approved. This time, we'll open the floor up for comments from the public pertaining to agenda items only. If you have a question or a comment pertaining to an agenda item tonight, please raise your hand, and we will recognize you. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the Mayor's Report. Do you have a brief report for us tonight, Mayor?
Since we're always waiting on me, I'll wait on Dr. Tom Miller for just a moment, so he can get his stopwatch ready. Yes, sir. To make this report just as quick and painless as possible, the qualification period for our candidates for Mayor and City Council closes at 5:00 today. A complete list of the candidates is available on our city website, so anybody who's interested can get on there, please. I want to compliment the candidates for stepping up to the plate as we go through this election process, especially at this grassroots level. It's a lot different than, I'm certain, as the national level, where they have the big buses that are air-conditioned, and they go to different venues that are usually a lot of food around, and usually air-conditioned, and around here, it's beating the asphalt streets, and I'm certain each and every one of us will lose anywhere from five to 20 pounds or so. But please be careful as we do go through this process of running for these elected offices. The election will be held on August 28. If there's a necessary runoff, that will be October 9. To move further along, I just want to compliment everybody for our Fourth of July, who I think it was a great success, the parade with our Korean War veterans, the Lions Club cookout, the special events that Kelly Cook arranged, with the help from, I believe, all the environmental, from all our departments, Environmental Services, Public Safety, Urban Management, Leisure Services Department. They did just a great job, and I want to say thank you to each and every one of them, because without them, the birthday of our nation would not have been quite as grandeur as it was. I think, and I might have been a little biased, but I think it was the best Fourth of July. I do know there was the biggest number of people we had in the parks this Fourth of July. Some of that was because of the city staff, but then also the committee that was pulled together, that Council President Reneger, you sat on, which was our Fourth of July Committee, and it was a great success because of you and other ones like yourself sitting up there. We were able to pull together all the funding that it needed, and that portion of the Fourth of July celebration was not funded by the city itself, not funded by taxpayer dollars. So that has really helped out a lot, and I think it means a lot more when you stand out there and realize that you really had a bigger part into the fireworks than just pulling up there and watching it, at least it was for me. But also, to move further on along, after the success of our recent grant contest, it become apparent to me that we needed a core group to look for these types of grant programs. I charged Teresa Lee with creating a "no excuses, just results" group on Facebook. We have pulled together several individuals and also representatives from the Humane Shelter, the library, a group whose main focus is to find these grants and/or contests for the veteran of the City of Prattville. At this point in time, they've identified the next challenge, which is the shelter challenge, and it's a challenge that has both, has two levels on it. One's a state level, one's a national level, and it goes through September 16. And if you win the national level, it's a $5,000 grant. So I know, especially in the difficult times that everybody's been in, where budgets have had to be trimmed, I think this $5,000, if Humane Shelter happens to win it, I think it'd be a very good blessing for them, because they do provide a very big service for us, because at one point in time, if everybody sitting up here remembers, we used to have a dog pound, and I don't know of anybody who wants to go back to that type of service. And we are pretty much mandated by the state to help out with this Humane Shelter. So I hope that they, I hope everybody will get involved with it. It's a once-a-day vote on it, and it's, right now, they're in 12th place nationally. Whenever they started, looking at this, we were in 955th place. We're 12th place now. On the Facebook, it's Grants for PAHS. We should also have some grant reports in some other areas in the very near future, because we made a couple of phone calls today about some potential grants, and I see quite a few more grants coming for us in the very near future. You know, it's a great opportunity to find ways for our projects through these community initiatives while continuing to build and solidify these relationships. Just a great way to help extend taxpayer dollars during this economic hardship we have experienced over the last, through this last few budget cycles. But one point of good news, I'd like to talk a little bit about the PSL Swim Team, the Prattville Swim League. Swim Team took first place this weekend in district finals and moves on to the state. They had a total of over 2,200 points, which put them into the state region there. But on a little bit more of a, I guess, a personal note for that team, Coach Joe Reynolds, his daughter, she qualified to compete for a spot on the U.S. Olympic Team. She made a great showing there, and we also be very proud of her, because she actually helped carry the Prattville banner to that event. She did not make it to the Olympic Team, but she did very, very well. August 7 is our national night out. You'll be hearing a little bit more about that in the very near future. It's an event sponsored by Target, which is a national event, but it showcases all of our public safety, multi-agencies, possibly even multi-juris district, juridistics, showing up there in August, in the Target parking lot, August 7. Then also tentative for September, there will be another similar function like that, possibly in the Kmart parking lot, and even possibly one downtown. Another item I want to bring to your attention is our Neighborhood Watch. It got started here in Prattville several years ago, and I'm looking into revitalizing it. It's been a dormant program for a while, and you'll also have some different reports on that in the very near future, so expect some, especially coming through your department, through your committee, Councilor Woods. A little bit of a brighter news, our Way Off Broadway Theater has a new production coming on July 26. It's called Patio Porch. It's a two-in-one act, which has a beginning being compared to the Fried Green Tomatoes. I've got the little flyer here that you'll see posted out, and they'll also be mailing out some postcard size, so hopefully I'll be able to see each and every one of you guys there. You can check with Kelly Cook on that. It runs until August 12. And I know, each and every one of these, I've gone to. I'd really have enjoyed them, so I hope to see you guys there. It's just one way that Prattville's trying to build up its Quality of Life Products Program, so if you can put that on your calendar, I know we all would appreciate it. One other one is the Founder's Day. We have a replay ceremony on Friday, July 20, 9:00 a.m. at Pratt Cemetery. There'll also be a reception after that at the Pratt Aga Museum across the street over here, but please join me in honoring Daniel Pratt on his birthday, if you do find that possible. I've also tasked Drew Peterson with pulling together a sports committee. It's one way for us to see exactly what direction that all of our parks and wrecks meets the needs and the wants of our community. And I think this last season, they had a real good season in both baseball, softball, and soccer, but Leisure Services Committee, we'll be hearing more about that. That should be pulled together in the very near future, and I'll be giving some updates on that also. July 31, tentative is going to be the date for our department budget hearings. Should be here in this chamber, as of right now, that is tentative. We'll be having the time and the exact location on that. I hope that each and every one of you guys can show up for that, if you're available. It's just going to be a new little process of trying to invite the community, the citizens out, to see what processes that we go through, that the Mayor goes through, in developing the budget. You guys are invited as a guest there. If you do have questions, I feel like we should be able to have some of those answered, but I do plan on having a budget presented to this body late August. So that'd be something for you to look forward to. On the agenda, authorizing the hiring of the firefighter. That is something I really ask that you move forward on tonight, that is a needed replacement And there's also a possibility that we might have to come back before you in the near future for another request like this, but at this point in time, it is not needed, but it, there might be a need in the future. Besides that, I'm open to any questions, comments.
Any questions for the Mayor? Councilor Bowles?
Yes, sir. Kind of my attention today that you received a certificate of some sort. Can you explain that to me?
Well, I finally found enough time to attend enough classes to get my Certified Municipal Officer Certificate, which I'd probably acquired, I'm going to do a little bit of guessing here, I'd probably acquired somewhere around 12 hours or so the first two years that I was on the council, and then that fell off of my radar, so to speak, but as stepping in as Mayor, I saw that there was a need for that, and so all the classes that I went to, I paid for out of my pocket. But yes, sir, they informed me that I did complete my 40 hours that I needed to, so I'll be getting that certificate in the very near future.
Well, congratulations. I know that's a lot of time and a lot of effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
I was really expecting somebody to say something about a splash pad, but if nobody wants to talk about it, I'll go sit down.
Well, we kind of figured that that would be your thunder for the end of the meeting, but.
Sounds good.
Okay. Councilor Miller?
Since you mentioned it, can you update us on the splash pad?
Well, only because you asked. At last count, City of Prattville was about 7 million votes ahead. Of course, they do have to do an audit, and they are working through those audits, and as of right now, they do not have a date to have an announcement on that, but we, there's probably a pretty good chance we're going to end up winning that Coca-Cola America's Favorite Park $100,000. So we will definitely keep you guys informed. I think it was a very energizing promotional contest that I think everybody enjoyed, because some of the last reports is that they had votes from all 50 states. I think Prattville raised itself up to national level there for just a moment, and it never hurts to get a lot of free publicity. I don't know if that had anything to do with all the people that I saw in the park just recently, but there's a lot of people in the park, several canoes, kayaks, tubing, so anyway, there's been a lot of activity in Pratt Park and the surrounding little areas there over the last several weeks. So I think the community enjoyed it, not just City of Prattville community, but the State of Alabama community. I think we really enjoyed it, because I had several phone calls from around the state. We communicated some with people from Iowa and several other states, and I've actually enjoyed, I'm sorry, I actually invited them down, if they're in this area, to stop in to see us. So I think it's been very good for us. And there's also, because of that contest, that grant awarding, it brought to knowledge, brought to light about another grant that hopefully I'll be talking about in the very near future, that will also bring us some more funding to spend in our parks. And that is one thing about the two grants that I have found, or that we have found, not I, but we have found, is that they are park-oriented, but we are still looking, several months ago, I did create also a grant-writing committee that's headed up by Michael Whaley, Michael Whaley from the Fire Department. But anyway, we have several department heads working on that, plus than the previous report that I talked about. So we actually have two different groups looking for grants, and hopefully be as successful with the rest of them as this last one was.
Any other questions or comments from the Mayor?
I can talk some more if you want me to.
You'll get another shot at it at the end of the meeting. Mr. Mosley, would you come give us a report on the status of the city's finances, please?
Absolutely. I provided everyone with the financial reports that are in front of you. The first report, as usual, is the revenue report for the month of June. You will see, it's pretty consistent with what's been going on the last several months. You'll see that on the budget total, we are 76.32% through the year, and most of those accounts, I mean, I'm sorry, the budget, they're budgeted, we've received 76.32% of what we have budgeted, and we're 66.67% through the year. So we're ahead of where we should be at this point. Most everything is running pretty good. As you'll know, sales tax is right there on the cusp of where it should be. Lodging taxes are down, as I've mentioned before in these meetings. It's not down far, but it is down a little bit below where we should be at this point, but most everything else is hanging in there where it should be, or higher. The next sheet you'll see is the tax breakdown comparison for the month of June. This is the report that I send out every month at the beginning of the month when I give the sales tax numbers. You'll notice that overall, the organic difference is 33,806,03 less than last year, actual is 21,229,82 less. And if you'll remember, June was the first month that we received the 1% additional. So it's more of apples to apples now. The next set of sheets is the expense report for the month of June. You'll see that is, you know, 75% through the year on those, and as you look through those, most, all of the departments are below budget, meaning they've spent less than where they should have, if they were actually going, spending all of their money, which is a very good thing, means that they're being very conscious of their budgets and only spending what they have to. And if you look at total, you'll see that we are at 63% through our budget, and we're 75% through the year. So both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, it's really good news. The next two sheets you'll see are the Enterprise Fund Income Statements for the month of June. You'll see that both of those are still running in the black. We had been waiting on some grant revenue to come back on the wastewater department. That money has started coming back. We've received about $150,000 back, so that's gone back into that Enterprise Fund to continue to operate. Also, a couple of things of interest, accounts payable still less than 30 days on all vendors. The group health accounts, as I reported last time, we owed two months, May and June. May has been paid, but we still owe for June and July. My goal is to have it completely caught up by the end of the fiscal year, so we can end the year on an even kill. I know this is probably on a lot of people's mind, being that November is not that far away, for the debt service payment, the large debt service payment that's due in November. We currently have $1.6 million in our debt service reserve account set aside. We're putting $500,000 aside every month to fund that payment in November, and we're well on track to make that. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Mosley?
Just one, Mr. Chair. When you say to make that, that total amount would be?
It's just approximately $3 million. I can't remember the exact. I think it's 2.9 million.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley?
Thank you, sir.
Very good report. Always like to keep it positive. We'll move into Council's Special Committee Reports. Councilor Striplin, do you have a report? Councilor Wood?
No.
Councilor Brown?
No, sir.
Councilor Miller?
No.
Councilor Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilor Fink?
No, sir.
Finance Committee met yesterday, and we are recommending the approval of all three items on this agenda. That being said, we'll move into the agenda items. First item is a resolution to appoint the Honorable Alfred Q. Booth to deliver voters' list to the city clerk. Councilor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Sections 11-46-36 and 11-46-37, Code of Alabama 1975 has amended mandates that the list of qualified voters be delivered to the city clerk's office by an impartial or disinterested party. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that Honorable Alfred Q. Booth is hereby appointed to serve in that capacity. So moved, Mr. President.
Councilor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Councilor Bowles. Is there any discussion about this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is a resolution to authorize the hiring of one firefighter for the Fire Department at an annual cost not to exceed $51,970. Councilor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need to hire one firefighter due to a recent resignation in that department, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed $51,970 for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $51,970 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one firefighter, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2012 budget line items, Fire Department slash salaries and wages, workman's compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Councilor Striplin. Any discussion about this proposed resolution? Councilor Miller?
This issue was brought to my attention by Chief Dallas Johnson, and it just happened, as you know, about a week or so ago. I'm sorry that I'm sort of losing track of time these last couple of weeks, it's been real hectic for me, but I didn't have time to pull together a fire committee. I think you remember, we sent an email to sort of explain it, one that was really well-written by Dallas, and so I support this, and I understand the Finance Committee, as you said earlier, likewise does, but it really gets to maintaining adequate staffing in our Fire Department, so I encourage everyone to consider supporting this.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. Any other comments? Councilor Bowles?
Chief, I have you for a second. The wages and benefits, salaries and benefits, that's enough to cover somebody if we can find, does that help where we can find somebody who's already trained and has their paramedic license?
That salary covers a firefighter, medic.
And how much does it cost if we hire somebody green and have to train them?
Off the top of my head, I didn't pull it. I mean, we can go online and look right fast.
Just ballpark it.
Several thousand dollars, because I have to pay them, I have to send them to school, and there are several people out there already certified. A lot of these young men are going on their own now, getting the certification, because they can self-sponsor themselves through the school, and it's more attractive to cities not to have to put all that money out for them. Plus, my need is to hire a medic. I'm losing medics.
So this will be enough money to fund that need?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is approved and adopted. Last item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize the Mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ataugon County to lease AutoMark handicap voting machines for use in the 2012 municipal elections. Councilor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville 2012 municipal elections will be held on August 28, 2012, and on October 9, 2012, in the event of a runoff, and whereas Ataugon County owns the AutoMark handicap voting machines that are used in these elections, and whereas Ataugon County agrees to lease these voting machines to the City of Prattville during its election at zero cost. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Mayor is hereby authorized to enter into the agreement with Ataugon County as attached to lease the AutoMark handicap voting machines for use in the 2012 municipal elections, and such agreement is hereby ratified and affirmed. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Councilor Brown. Is there any questions or comments pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, the resolution is approved and adopted. That exhausts our regular agenda. Is there any agenda items to come from the floor tonight? Okay, we will open the floor up to the public to address the council on any item of business pertaining to their city this evening. Anyone like to address the council? Mrs. Boone?
Laura Lee Boone, 210 Phone Lane, Prattville, 36067. Quick question about Resolution Number Two. The money that you just authorized to hire a new fireman, will this be matching what the person who resigned made, or is this in addition to what they made before? And we may need to.
I defer to Mrs. Thrash on this. I have an answer, but you'd rather hear it from her, anyway.
This will actually be lower than the firefighter that's leaving, that person was at a Step Three or Four, and this is the entry-level pay grade plus medic pay.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question.
For those that don't know, Mrs. Thrash is our HR Director. Yes, sir, you're next. State your name and your address, please.
My name is John Wiggins, address 214 Magnolia Drive, and I've been living in Prattville seven years, and I seven years, and I've become very proud to be a Prattvillian. So, but in moving here, I bought a home over Camilla Estates, and all the properties around there were rental, but mine, once I bought it. Now, on one side of the street, there's five in a row that's privately owned. On my side, there's about seven privately owned, and it's turning back into a owner community. And it really helps appearance. Well, I'm here to complain about a street odor for me, which affects me in more ways than one. And that has to do with abandoned vehicles. The ordinance that the City of Prattville has, it has it broke down in two parts. And one of them is abandoned non-operating vehicle on private property, and the other one is abandoned non-operating vehicles on a roadway. Well, I want to address both parts of that with my complaint that I filed four months ago. It goes on, the planning department deals with non-operating vehicles on private property by issuing the owner a ten-day notice to remove the vehicle or to make the vehicle operable. That's on the property. If the vehicle is not made operable or removed within the ten days, an arrest warrant is issued so that the individual will appear in court. The second part is, at the same address, there was a van that had been parked in the street for months, not moved. But after they received the letter, it got pulled around and it's up under the oak tree, parked in a way that you can't see the tag on it, to get by the ordinance. But on the non-operating, this was a black SUV. It had been sitting on blocks for months, no wheels, no hubs, just axle showing. After they got the request from the city, they went in and they took a torch and they cut it up. Part of it was probably sent to the junkyard. But along the house, there's body parts. On the driveway, there's four blocks. There's framing for the vehicle. There's a motor, transmission. All these things are there, just like a used car lot. So, they appear to be working around it, because it's no longer a vehicle. But when the complaint was filed, it was a legitimate vehicle. So, I sent Carl Wilson an email today. I filed the first complaint through the computer four and a half months ago. I sent him a... Counselor Woods, I seesued him a copy. And I'm not getting a lot of response, because I've had seven interactions back and forth between them. I know nothing about where it's at. And my daughter and her husband has accepted a five-year missionary appointment in Zambia, Africa. And we're selling the house, which is down the street on Camilla Wood Court, which is a much nicer part of the neighborhood than what you got to go through to get there. This is going to affect that. If they don't sell it, we're going to try putting it through the Maxwell Rental. But Ariman coming in, they're not going to want to go down there and live back down in those woods, no matter how nice a house is. So, I have two, I consider legitimate reasons. The community we're in, we're trying to bring it back up to the standards of a nice community, not rental property where everybody is to themselves. But all of us know each other up and down the street, and we interact. But you can only do that if it's privately owned, because people come and go, and a lot of them have attitudes that they don't want to be a part of the community. And we have to live with that. So, that's what I'm bringing for you tonight, is a follow-up or complaint that I'd like to be kept up to date on it, because this is something that involves me personally. And like I say, I've been here seven years. I love Prattville. It's good to be a Prattvillian where there's football, where there's opportunities in the community, what we have as far as the parks and what's coming up. It's a great place, and I'd like to see it become greater in my area as well as yours.
Well, sir, first of all, let me commend you and your neighbors for revitalizing your neighborhood. That's outstanding. That would set an example that we could all emulate. Now, your councilperson is Counselor Wood, right?
Yeah. And we've communicated back and forth, and he sent me an email today, and I told him I would be here tonight, so...
Okay. Counselor Wood, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Mr. Wiggins, thank you for taking time to come down. You can have a seat now. I would just like to say that he has been doing this for several months. I've also talked to the planning director and made him aware, has given him the address and the copy. And I want to assure him that whatever codes are being violated, I hope that the planning department will have corrected, send a written report, Joel, if you will, not only to Mr. Wiggins, but also to me, so that we both can stay abreast of what's going on. I assure you, we want to keep the community looking good. I see your hand going up, Mayor.
Mayor, did you want to be recognized on this one? When Counselor Wood finishes, we'll recognize you.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. I see his hand flapping. It makes me forget what I want to say. I'm finished. Thank you, Mr. Wiggins.
Mayor, you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, sir. And I also want to say thank you for coming down. I have been by, and I have seen exactly firsthand what you're talking about. And we have been in communication with that department. And if you will give me your phone number, even though I have your email, I would like to... Okay. And I will call you, and I will assure you that this is in motion. And the next step is... Anyway, it just takes time. So, you will be in contact, and we'll try to give you a timeline on how long, much longer it will take. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business? Mr. Reinhardt, come forward, please. Give us your name and your address.
Good evening. Tom Reinhardt, Jr., 107 Deer Trace.
Yes, sir. What can we do for you tonight?
Well, I'd just like to address the council and all gathered here, including the mayor, with a compliment. So, I hope you will be patient with me if I become a little long-winded. But I think perhaps you may be interested. I've lived here in Prattville, or the Prattville area, for approximately forty years. It's been an enjoyable experience. Over the past forty years, I've had the pleasure of experiencing the police department here in Prattville, and all the officers that worked for the police department over the past forty years. I've met them on several occasions in different places, for whatever the reason. And I must say that it's always been a pleasurable experience. Our police, whoever they may have been, over the years, have always been kind, courteous, pleasant, friendly, and professional. Now, how they reconciled all of these virtues, I don't know, but they did. And I'd like to tell everybody, including the mayor and Chief Huggins, sadly, I cannot say this about any other law enforcement agency I've ever met, just Prattville. I have never met a Prattville police officer from the top down that I didn't enjoy meeting. It's a pleasure. Prattville, the City of Prattville, can be proud of their police department, very proud. And I implore all of you, at one point or another, sooner, better than later, to commend our officers in uniform, and let them know how much you appreciate them for the job well done. Give them the gratitude they deserve. And in closing, I'm not going to leave out another very special group of people that works for us, and that's our fire department, too. And I've had the pleasure of meeting a lot of our firefighters. And they, too, are just as special as our policemen. Every time I've come across a firefighter, it's been a very pleasant experience. I've never had a bad one. What else can you say about that? Prattville's got a lot to be proud of. I don't know who else has addressed the city council about our public servants. I don't know what they've said, good or bad. But you can take what I've told you to heart. We've got a lot to be proud of. We have the best. Mayor, chief, you can be proud of your people. Thank them for the job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Any comments or questions for Mr. Reinhardt? Counselor Bowles?
I want to say thank you. My brother's on the police department. We're twins. So, if you ever get pulled over, it's not me. But I do appreciate it, and they mean an awful lot to everybody up here and to the community. That's what sets Prattville apart. If you get pulled over, I know one time, I hate to brag on my brother, but I'll go ahead and say it. He pulled over a guy at the Air War College, a Colonel, gave him a ticket, looked down, he had a flat tire. He changed his tire for him, because he didn't want to be late for work. Said it's the first time he ever got a raving recommendation after giving somebody a ticket. And that's what sets people apart in Prattville, is our employees. From the guys picking up the garbage, to the motorcycle policeman, to the guys riding the back of the fire trucks. So, we have the top of the top for employees.
Well, I have two very close friends that are Prattville police. The fellow, I think of him as the brother I've always wanted but never had. And the young lady, I think of as a sister. I can't think of any finer people. And that's saying a lot.
Any other questions or comments of Mr. Reinhardt? Mayor?
Yes, I just want to say thank you. I'm very proud that, over the last almost eight years that I've been able to get to know the vast majority of the city employees. And they have made Prattville proud. And it is the people of Prattville that make Prattville. And I think we are a special community. And thank you for coming down, sharing that with us.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business this evening? Yes, sir. Please come to the mic. Give us your name and your address, please.
Richard Minnick, 105 Asbury Drive.
Yes, sir. What can we do for you tonight?
So, I was up here a few city council meetings ago, and was bringing up some of the details on the budget that we had on the website and stuff. And some things have been addressed, and I really appreciate that. Just some things I did note that would help on the side is, when they posted online to the webpage, it'd be great if we knew what the date of it actually was. If you hover over the links, you know by the date of the file what it is, but we don't really have a date in here. It would also be helpful if we had what the original budget is and the amendments, so that we can see every bit of it. Only thing you see right now is the latest.
Gotcha.
So, that would help greatly. Another thing is, in order to get a delta, and I talked about this before, what was the original budget, or what was the amended budget, and what is it now, you have to physically go in there and do all the math yourself. So, it'd be great if they were tracking that. Here's what the mayor puts out, the approved budget from last year, the approved budget this year, if there was a difference. As you've seen here, I went through from the last amended budget to this amended budget. We went up twenty-five, twenty-nine, five in our revenue, but our expenditures went up forty-two, five. Little details like that start to become significant. So, like when Ms. Boone's up here, and she's asking questions of where this money's coming from, that kind of stuff, it just gives us a better picture if some of that information can be available. And I think it's really good. I think we're seeing a lot of the citizens now trying to be involved in minding the shop all across the board. And I think that's great. It shows the involvement and the willingness to get up in front of the council and have that ability. But I appreciate it. If there's any questions.
Thank you for your input and your help.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mayor?
Yes, thank you for coming down. And I do agree with you. There's a lot more... I don't know about watching the shop, but there's a lot of concerned citizens and interested citizens out there, and I do applaud them for that. And I think we have made some great strides over the years. One was getting just different items on the website.
Absolutely.
I have worked with, talking with our finance director about trying to either highlight or show some comparisons there, and then hopefully, when the next budget cycle, we should have that corrected.
Right. The raw budget, obviously, is coming out of a system that's not going to let you do that kind of manipulation, which is great. But even spreadsheet or some other document that shows what the deltas are and the changes, that just makes it a lot easier. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business this evening? Okay, Mayor, you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. August the twentieth is when most everybody's going to be going back to school. That's when most schools are open back at... Well, August the eighteenth, we're going to be having a back-to-school event in Pratt Park. Just want to go ahead and get a little bug in everybody's ear. You'll start seeing some information popping up, similar to how the Fourth of July was advertised. But besides that, I do want to say thank you, gentlemen, and ladies, ladies, for the hard work that you guys have done over the past years with me. And I look forward to several more years with each and every one of you guys. But as we do go into our political campaigning mode, wish each and every one good luck that has qualified. There again, be careful with the heat, make certain you stay hydrated, because we definitely... I think everybody loves our fire department. We do not want to have to call them out to resuscitate a candidate. But besides that, have a good evening.
Counselor Striplin?
Yes, sir. Just a few items. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for your comments. They are certainly appreciated. Also express appreciation to all the staff that were involved in the Fourth of July events. It was a long day, but it was a very enjoyable day. I also express appreciation to all of those that were involved in the splash pad voting and the leadership that the city gave in that area. It was a great spirit builder for our community, and I've heard a lot of very positive comments about that. Last item is, I think this will be my last public opportunity to express appreciation to Mr. Ken Johnson for his efforts in beautifying Prattville. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone for what they do in the City of Prattville, all employees. Everyone does a fine job. I've had the opportunity, by the grace of God, to be here for many years. I came in with black hair, and it's slightly gray now. I thank them for that. We still have a long way to go. We still have a lot of trials. We still have a lot of things to deal with. But if we all continue to work together, and as I always say, ladies and gentlemen, whoever's up here, if you agree to disagree and respect each other, I think we can continue to do things, if you will agree to disagree. And I just want to urge you to do that, whoever is here in this office. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Brown?
There'll be a streets committee meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, at three p.m. in the City Hall Annex. Everybody can come.
Counselor Miller?
I also want to thank Mr. Reinhardt for coming down and saying those words. It was not only kind, but I think that it means a lot to city employees and staff when they get recognized in such a positive way. So, thank you for doing that. I wanted to, I guess, say a little bit of personal stuff. I had shared with most of you, I think, or all of you. Again, it's been real hectic, but I didn't know if I was going to be here tonight, because my wife had surgery this morning. And I was up at Baptist Surgical Suite from five this morning until a little after two. So, I'm glad to report that she did well, and went home, same-day surgery. And the final stuff will come with the further studies on the tissue that they removed. It was a thyroid issue. But everything is looking as good as it can right now, and probably will continue to look that way. So, I appreciate the folks that had her and me and your thoughts and prayers. And I'm glad to report that she is doing well.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, I want to start off by saying thanks to the city employees for the perfect way the Fourth of July went off. Absolutely great from the beginning to the end. It was just fantastic. But I want to give a special thanks to several people tonight. First, starting with Mark Rhodes. He, for the Fourth of July, and again, Sunday, for the splash pad, cooked hot dogs, worked out in the heat. It was hot. Let me tell you, it was hot. And Mark, I don't know if y'all know him. You need to get to know him. He's a fireman. He's also over, the president of the union here, and he does a lot of extras above and beyond. I appreciate that, Mark. Thank you very much. A special thanks to Teresa Lee, Kelly Cook, and to Drew. The splash pad would have never happened without you guys. I know it, and I really appreciate all three, all the extra effort, the countless hours that you did off the clock at home, putting the events together. And I really think the thing about the splash pad is, I haven't seen this community drawn together like this since the tornado. And it has been a very special thing to be a part of. And I really appreciate y'all's extra effort and extra work. Thank you.
Counselor Fink?
I guess, just to give Mark a little hard time, I had one of those hot... I guess, just to give Mark a little hard time, I had one of those hot dogs. I'm not sure they were cooked. They might have been burned, but you did a good job with that. But, Mr. Reinhardt, thank you as well. It's, all too often, we oftentimes don't hear the positive sometimes. It's oftentimes the negative that gets conveyed to us and the employees as well. So thank you for taking the time to come with a positive message as well. Thank you.
Being the last one to speak, usually it's all been said, but I will say this, that the citizens that I have spoken with, including Mr. Tom Reinhardt, Jr., are all very impressed with the extra effort that each and every employee of this city is expending each and every day, and I'm proud of all of you, and I encourage Mr. Reinhardt to come and share his sentiments tonight, and thank you, Tom, for doing that. That being said, the next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August the seventh, twenty-twelve, at six P.M. right here in the council chambers. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Counselor Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.